All right, everybody, we're live. The voices off, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 4, 2021 Planning and Work Session together with our monthly State Board of Education meeting. Chair Davis cannot be with us today. My name is Allen Duncan, and I serve as Vice Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. I want to welcome all Board members, advisors, staff, onsite visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. Remember to follow the North Carolina State Board of Education on Twitter at @EdStateBoardNC. You can also view all meeting materials and follow the meeting online. I remind the audience and those listening that this body meets monthly, and it's official meeting typically scheduled for the first Thursday of the month. Today's meeting follows our biannual Planning and Work Session. Momentarily, we will all have a closing keynote speech from Ms. Denise Fort, who has for over two decades served as the federal legislative and executive branch's liaison for Ed Trust in advancing education and family policy. Board members, you are reminded that it is our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on this particular matter. Board members, you have seen the agenda for over a week and had the opportunity to review it. I ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. If not, I request a motion for approval.
Summit.
Ms. Cammets, seconded by Mr. Keenan. Ask Dr. Townsend Smith now to call, roll, and to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Cammets?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes. Thank you, Board members. At this time, will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to now recognize Ms. Fort, our closing keynote speaker, to end our Planning and Work Session. At the end of Ms. Fort's remarks, we will certainly have occasion to ask any questions or make comments, and I want to also encourage any of our colleagues and our advisors who want to make any comments or reflections about the Planning and Work Session, which has been very engaging and introduced a lot of challenging thoughts, and we have been challenged in many respects, but we want to have that opportunity for all Board members who want to comment and advisors who want to add to that. So with that, Ms. Fort, welcome. We're very glad to have you with us today.
Thank you so much, and I really do appreciate the invitation. Good morning, everybody. My name is Denise Fort. I'm the interim CEO at the Education Trust, and we are a national research and advocacy nonprofit organization working to close opportunity gaps for students of color and students from low-income households. I really do enjoy having an opportunity to speak with friends in North Carolina. It was my home for seven years, first while I was attending Duke University and later when I went on to work in Clemens outside of Winston-Salem. And through the Education Trust, I've also had the opportunity to work with a number of educators and advocates who are doing simply amazing work in their communities to ensure that underserved children have access to high-quality education. And I honestly do wish I could be there joining you in person because it's been a long time since I've had a biscuit in Biscuitville, and I love that place when I was there. I'm also just incredibly honored to be speaking with you because you are the people who are shaping education in North Carolina at an incredibly challenging time for students and educators. And I love the name of this gathering. It really sums it up. "North Carolina: Be the Change; Bridges to Eliminating Opportunity Gaps; Progress and Promise Towards a Sound Basic Education." In particular, it really moves me because it calls out the promise and the progress that is possible right now if we can work together to do right by students. And honestly, they need us to step up right now. They've experienced more than 18 months of interrupted or unfinished learning, the lessons that students missed or didn't master during the pandemic. And to put that into a little bit of perspective, most of today's third graders have not had a normal year since kindergarten. And student performance data shows that all student learning has been impacted by the pandemic, but the impact has been far greater for certain student populations, particularly students of color, students from low-income backgrounds. And North Carolina's results, test results, revealed that 53% of eighth graders were proficient in math in 2018-19 compared to just 33% this year. The data show that schools were supporting too few students of color, students from low-income backgrounds, English learners, students with disabilities, not supporting them well enough to reach grade-level proficiency in eighth-grade math to begin with. And then the pandemic really exacerbated these inequities. In 2018-19, about a third of Black students were proficient in eighth-grade math, but this year, just 15% are. It is well documented that COVID-19 has inflicted greater pain on communities of color and communities with fewer resources, and honestly, not just the resources that our schools can offer. The recovery is slow in these communities, the direct result of many longstanding inequities: access to health care, jobs that allow for remote work, safe and healthy housing, among others. And we know that the pandemic's impact on students, of course, extends far beyond test scores in academics because, over the past year and a half, many students were required, you know, to step up even more than before in their families and in their communities, from shouldering caretaking duties for siblings, family members, becoming more active in protests against police brutality and racial injustice on top of their studies. And many have also experienced incredible hardship, such as losing family members to the coronavirus and dealing with family members who have lost their jobs. And all of this has been especially true for students in the community's hardest hit by COVID. Students need educators, like so many of you who are listening to this on Twitter in the room, to recognize and foster their assets and strengths, and too often, they get the opposite. Too often, students of color and students from low-income backgrounds are seen as broken or in need of fixing. Even when it is fueled by good intentions, that mindset undermines their excellence and undermines it in real and harmful ways. And of course, students in North Carolina, and especially students from low-income communities and students of color, faced a number of challenges that predate the pandemic. You all are very familiar with the Leandro Court case, still winding its way through the court 28 years later. The children it was filed to help are now old enough to be parents, even grandparents, and is still not resolved. What kind of message does this send to students and families when equal opportunity takes a backseat to politics, when they're told their history is unimportant or offensive, or when their school doesn't have a single educator who looks like them? The evidence is clear that access to racially and culturally diverse teacher workforce is beneficial for all students, from preschool through high school graduation, for Black children, white children, Latino children. It's especially important for these students of color, who often thrive in classrooms led by teachers who can thrive in classrooms led by teachers who share their racial and cultural background. Yet, North Carolina, like many states, has made little progress in closing this diversity gap. In 2019, 53% of school students in North Carolina were students of color, but only 22% of teachers. Closing this diversity gap, when 81% of students enrolled in educator prep programs are white, will be difficult. So helping students grow academically, socially, and emotionally after the pandemic, tackling inequitable and insufficient resources, and ensuring our schools reflect, respect, and celebrate the diverse identities of our students, these are not small challenges and nor are they easy to solve. Here's the thing, though, and this is what I'm hopeful about, there are areas of great opportunity where steps being taken in North Carolina over the last few years show real promise. Tremendous progress is possible if policymakers, administrators, educators can work together and make equity-focused, evidence-based decisions now to support students on their learning. Let's talk funding first, as I know likely that's top of mind. The judge in the Leandro case has said that as early as next week, November 8, he's considering issuing a court order to compile the General Assembly to fund a plan that includes $1.7 billion in new school funding over the next two years. And it's not just that North Carolina's judicial branch pushing on the plan that would mean more money for low-wealth school districts, teacher pay raises, expanded 3K. The State Board has agreed to it, the Governor's End, the Legislature. Longer hurdle in this fight is currently sitting on a $6 billion budget surplus. It looks to me that North Carolina could be on the cusp of making a real progress towards fully inequitably funding a sound basic education for all children. What we need is we just need a few more adults in leadership roles recognizing that this responsibility falls squarely on their shoulders. Not only makes North Carolina schools see billions more in state dollars, but they're already receiving billions of new federal education dollars. Under the American Rescue Plan, as you know, North Carolina will receive $5 to $6 billion. These are vital state and federal resources that have the potential, they have promise, not just to help state and leaders build back from COVID, but also to greatly improve educational equity in the state and narrow those longstanding opportunity gaps. Progress hinges on how the policymakers and administrators here today and throughout the state decide how to spend those funds. That's why my organization recently partnered with Education Resource Strategies to create a guide so that education stakeholders, school board members, state and district leaders, civil rights advocates, families, advocates, and even students themselves can evaluate how well resources are being used to boost educational opportunity and create a plan for collaborative action. School funding is a critical component of education resource equity, but as this guide lays out, it is really just one of 10 dimensions critical to unlocking opportunity for every student. And these dimensions include positive school climate, engaging instruction, strong school leadership, and they're all fundamentally grounded in the daily experience of students in schools. So yes, we really should be asking if dollars are allocated flexibly, transparently, and in a way that allows every student to reach high standards and thrive. But we also need to be asking if every student has access to teaching practices that are engaging, culturally irrelevant, culturally relevant, and standards aligned to arts and enrichment opportunities beyond core content. Do they experience safe schools with culturally sensitive and consistently enforced discipline policies? Progress is really possible when our schools and communities avoid a one-size-fits-all approach and instead provide students with the right combination of supports based on their needs, which are different for different groups of students at different moments. This is what true education resource equity looks like, and that is how we can accelerate learning for all students so that all children can achieve their biggest dreams. So that's the picture of how these new education dollars can be used to ensure schools are better meeting the needs of historically underserved students. But I also know there is a lot of pressure on folks right now to focus more on short-term needs and specifically on putting evidence-based strategies into action to address the unfinished learning during the pandemic. It is a daunting task, but I'll tell you why I have hope, why I see that the promise of what these programs can do. We know what works, and states now have the dollars to put it into action. The first proven strategy for unfinished learning is targeted intensive tutoring, sometimes considered high-dosage tutoring, which, when done well, provides students with a teacher or a well-trained tutor to work with over an extended period of time on academic skills like math or reading. And the best way to set this up is so that an individual tutor works with one or two students at a time, using a skill-building curriculum closely aligned with the school's curriculum and targeted to the student's academic needs. The second proven strategy is expanded learning time. Research clearly shows that increasing hours spent on core content during the school day benefits all age groups, all types of students, and subject matter. It is mostly effective with class sizes 20 or fewer, and when certified teachers use a high-quality, standards-based curriculum, but again, is aligned to the school-wide curriculum. And the third proven strategy, and I really hope that people think about this and dedicate time to building an infrastructure to support this, the third proven strategy is building and maintaining strong relationships between students and school staff. Because we know when students have access to more strong relationships, they are more academically engaged, they have stronger social skills, and they experience more positive behavior. These three strategies show tremendous promise for students, but meaningful progress can only be achieved if these actions are taken with an equity lens, one that supports positive racial, cultural, and ethnic identity development. To help administrators and educators do this, the Education Trust has published practical guidance about the most important guardrails to consider when implementing these strategies. We talk about ensuring all tutors receive pre-service and ongoing professional development because it's important that not only they can deliver academic support, but they can identify affirming practices that support the social, emotional, and academic well-being of all students. Using the schedule to expand core instruction time in ways that don't require hiring additional teachers, force students to miss enrichment programs, or return to school after hours or stigmatize participation. Hiring additional support staff who are trained to address the needs of students who have experience in increased stress and trauma. You can find these resources on our website at trust.org, and I hope you'll share it. Check it out, share it with other partners in this work. And finally, I want to talk about one final barrier to educational equity where we see significant movement in the right direction. Because I forgot to mention, I have one more connection to North Carolina, which is I serve on the Board of the HUN Institute. Just before the pandemic struck, the HUN Institute partnered with the North Carolina Business Committee for Education and the Governor's Office to hold the DRIVE Summit, which brought together state and national experts and practitioners for a discussion of the challenges and opportunities recruiting, preparing, and retaining educators of color. Since then, a plan of action has been developed and presented to the Governor. Progress here is in so many places to move from, you know, will come down to the political will to change the status quo, to move from potential strategies that prioritize a teacher workforce that reflects the diversity of North Carolina students. It is true that the pandemic created the worst educational crisis we will likely see in our lifetime. It has created new and unforeseen challenges, but also exacerbated longstanding inequities in school systems across the country. But there is potential and promise in our response to it. North Carolina can focus now on returning things back to normal. It can seize this moment to invest in building something better, and we know we can do it if policymakers, administrators, and educators can focus on what's important, sidestep political distractions, and move with urgency to adopt equity-focused, evidence-based solutions. I really do believe together we can make real progress for students of color and students from low-income households, and I'm looking forward to some Q and A.
Thank you, Ms. Fort. Let me turn to my colleagues and look for any questions or comments that we may have.
I have quick comments.
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you so much for the presentation. My name is Olivia Oxendine, and I'm from the Sandhills area of the state, representing 12 school districts. And I was listening very closely to your presentation and mainly listening for strategies, and you really gave a very, you gave several, but two of them are very sensible, and it's the high-quality tutoring, to focus on training and working with a group of tutors who understand the curriculum, who understand alignment, who know how to work with small groups, especially students who are encountering other problems, and then adjusting the master's schedule to provide for extended learning time. So those are, they're practical and so doable, and the monies, I don't know even if we need any extra money, maybe, maybe not, to make those practical strategies, put them in place. So thank you so much for just bringing up practical thinking to your presentation.
Well, thank you, and you are right. I mean, they are easy to put in place. I think the important thing to remember, though, is this is a long game. This is not a one-and-done, and to really do those things right, you do have to build the infrastructure to maintain them, which could include, you know, working with community-based providers, but making sure that you have the infrastructure to continue the work is what's going to be really important to accelerate that learning. I think one thing that really keeps me up at night is that some folks are treating things like the pandemic is over, and the unfinished learning really did have an impact on our kids, and we're seeing this in so many different studies.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I'll just add that to your point, I would like to thank the Board for its support of NC EdCor, which will be providing high-dosage tutoring all across our state.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you for that important and timely reminder of the work that's ongoing, very important work right now. Other questions, comments?
I would.
Mr. Hall and Mr. Ford.
Thank you. I'm Wendell Hall. I guess my question is, as a veteran, how do you get buy-in? How do you get others to buy into the concept and the work that's involved? I hear about equity, I mean, all the time. I'm a product, but how do you get buy-in? Now, you see what I'm coming from? What strategies do we use?
I think that is a really great question. So we work across the country, actually, we're in 14 different states, and the key to impact for us is working with a broad table of stakeholders. We believe that when you can bring parents, educators, civil rights advocates, business leaders, immigration activists to the table and actually give them the research and the data, they know how to bring change for you. They know what needs to happen in order to advocate for policy changes. But too often, many of those communities don't have a seat at the table, and across the country, Massachusetts, Maryland, Tennessee, Texas, Louisiana, Kentucky, it is this broad stakeholder engagement that has really brought about change. And there are a lot of local organizations that are doing that here in North Carolina already, and it's exciting to see some of that work, but it really does take a statewide stakeholder engagement effort.
Thank you.
Ms. Fort.
Good morning, Ms. Fort. My name is Jamesy Ford. I am at-large member on the State Board and have the pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee along with Vice Chair Jill Cammetsen. I really just wanted to make a comment to say thank you. Thank you for taking the time and in a very short amount of minutes, really driving home the spirit of everything that we've been trying to accomplish as a Board here. You have spoken with eloquence about the necessity of centering equity and centering those who are most historically marginalized and closest to the disruption to their learning, but more so also giving our state some inspiration around tactics that can actually be deployed, and frankly, a vision for how we can get there. And I think that we stand in continual need of a jolt of inspiration, but also a jolt of honesty, and I think you provided dosages of both of those. So I just wanted to say thank you for your time and for sharing your talent and treasure with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Others? Any other comments or questions? Well, Ms. Fort, on behalf of the Board, I want to thank you very much for your words this morning, which, as has already been commented, show some description of the past and show a path to the future and provide hope on a topic that everyone cares deeply about. Obviously, you've devoted much of your life's work to that, and we are thankful for that, and we're certainly thankful for the remarks you've brought to us today.
Well, again, I really do appreciate the invitation, and the Education Trust is ready to help in whatever way we can. We do bring a lot of resources to the table for, you know, state boards, other state decision-makers, and we're happy to support you all in any way, and really do appreciate the opportunity to be here with you.
Thank you.
Have a great morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we close our strategic planning work session, let me turn it over to Mr. Ford and Ms. Cammets for any comments that they'd like to make, and for any other Board members who may want to share as we try to summarize the work that's been done the last two days, which Superintendent and I were discussing this morning. It's hard work. We were tired at the end of both of those days because our minds were working and thinking about really significant problems and significant issues, and meanwhile, being inspired by some things that are happening. So it's been a good two days, and so let me thank you for your leadership on this, and let me give you the floor.
Well, thank you for that, Vice Chair Duncan. I'm going to be very, very brief here before I pass it over to Jill and just say that it's, you know, people have heard me in professional capacity talk about this notion of radical imagination, and really, it's an idea that situates itself in not ignoring your present circumstance, right? So you look at the reality and all of its texture, and sometimes its harshness and its bleakness, so it doesn't ignore that, but it says that despite that, I'm going to imagine a possibility, a future beyond that, that another way is possible. And I have to admit that that's a difficult prospect sometimes, that when you look at your timeline, look at the news, or, you know, you're constantly bombarded with negative information, that becomes difficult. But the purpose was of this Planning and Work Session was to grind ourselves in that reality, but practice that devotion to a radical imagination, that despite looking 20 years in the rearview and seeing many of the same maladies plaguing us, that another way is possible. And it's our job in this moment to cast that radical imagination into the future, and I feel like that was embodied by all the presenters. Some of them, I mean, I know number crunching, looking at budgets, it's not the most exciting thing. Chair of the Biz Dot Community, I know you might take offense to that, but that was important work, talking about the social and emotional components of not just the students, but also the adults, and the way that that's a central part of the learning process is hugely important. And then getting a chance, frankly, to speak with the folk who work at DPI, right, about the challenges and also the opportunities in their work, that's how we get to this place of radical imagination and make that a reality. So I was just really, really encouraged by that, and I hope that other folks find this time together to be able to fellowship with each other and learn from each other as fruitful.
As we go to Ms. Cammets, I'm going to say on Ms. Shaw's behalf, I thought that was an excellent presentation, and the key to it, of course, was it helped show us, you know, what And the key to it, of course, was it helped show us what resources we have and how we try to look at prioritizing those resources, which I know you fully agree with is critical to any of this work. So it shows how it all fits together regardless of how exciting your committee may be, or how boring, in the case of BizOP, your committee may be. There are important bricks in all these committees.
Yeah, and I would love to have just a minute before we toss it to Ms. Cametson to close.
Please, super good.
So to that, to that point about our presentation from our wonderful CFO, Alexis Schaus, I do want to share a couple of points of, I think, hopefulness in our quest for financial equity, certainly. And that is this, I learned so much from Alexis' presentation, and some of the information she shared was quite shocking, not the least of which was the fact that pension costs have doubled in the last 10 years for our teachers, and the enormous amount of money that we funnel into the teacher-retirement system each year to make sure that our educators will have that pension waiting for them. But right now in North Carolina, I think it's important to point out a couple of things. Our highest-funded groups of students in our state right now, our highest funding per pupil, is for our American Indian students and our African-American students. We fund the top quartile of the highest-poverty schools more than the lowest. Her presentation was very clear about that. We need to be having conversations about how much more. And I would love to see us get a little bit more specific about how much more and where, because we saw yesterday that we've got many schools that are seeing high incomes with, high outcomes with less money. Now, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have more money, but we need to find out what those schools are doing and figure out what can be possibly replicated or scaled. Right now in the United States, the four out of the six highest-funded states for education rank in the bottom half for NAEP math outcomes. Why is that? What is happening that they're spending more money and getting worse outcomes? And we have that in our own state as well. And I think there's some root cause analysis that needs to be done to find out what is not working and what is working. Where are our failures, quite honestly, and where are our triumphs? And we have to continue to allow the data to drive us forward.
Ms. Cametson.
I would not presume to add to either one of those sets of comments, but actually, there is one thing I want to say, though. In reflecting over the last couple of days, I would say that the theme that ran through almost every presentation that we heard was the importance of listening. And we certainly have been doing a lot of it the last two days. But it strikes me that, I have to say to my colleagues around the table, I think that the listening starts with all of us, and we have, we do a very good job of listening to each other and thinking about what we're hearing before we act, and I appreciate that very much. And I think that what we heard yesterday affirms the importance of that, particularly in the area of whole child and social-emotional learning and the needs that we're trying to meet in our kids right now. But listening is important, and we need to continue to do that with each other.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Keen.
I'd like to chime in on what Superintendent just said a few minutes ago about resources and trying to find the answer. And of course, it's sort of difficult, but I always try to remember, resources, as we know, money-wise is not always the answer. We've got to help make sure the right people in the right place, because you put all the money you want to, but if that person doesn't believe in your cause, you waste your money. So that sounds simplistic, but there's more to that, but sometimes you do find yourself in people who are not committed to what you're trying to do. And I always say here on the State Board, we set policy, and sometimes it's very difficult for us to get superintendents to necessarily buy in on what we're trying to do. Because as you know, at the local level, that superintendent is going to guide the philosophy that you have as a county. And that's complex, because we can do only so much for superintendents, you know, for his eye and problem, but we can't continue to set policy and to monitor and try to make sure the people that we, entitled to education that we from this department emphasize and do the things that show that we're committed to making a difference in equity for all kids. So just in it, I'm just, I think somebody made a presentation a few weeks ago, and he stood up and said, money without vision is a waste of money, which is true. So let's get the right people in the right places and stay on top of everything.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Dr. Oxendine.
And piggybacking on what my colleague just said about getting the right people in the classrooms, getting the right people with students, we have got to continue, and I, we are, we're working hard at this, but we must be, it's nonstop work, in my opinion, working with our EPPs and making sure that we are putting in those classrooms, teachers of color, but teachers of all colors, who know how to teach folks, who are good teachers, they understand standards, they understand how to convert them to lesson plans, they know how to lead small groups, how to do whole groups, they're smart in their content. And I want to put a double on "smart" in their content. So we have so much to do. And I, you know, I'm an EPP person. I see it, I know it, I'm in classrooms, I watch it, I spend time with principal interns, I have these discussions with them, you've got to do, please, spend every, whatever it takes to make sure you've got the best in those classrooms, especially the students who are years-veering, oh, I mean, this may sound negative, like the glass is half-empty, but some of them, it's just going to be hard for them to catch up. It's really math, reading, comprehension, writing, science, on and on and on, but we have to keep trying, don't we? So that is my, that is my wish. And to, I've got to say this, Reggie may want to kick me under the table. But I will always remember yesterday afternoon, when we concluded, we were about to go in closed session, and Reggie Keenan said, I've been here a long, long time, 20 years maybe, and I bet you were going to be 20 more, Reggie, and I, I don't want us to continue having these conversations, I want us, something like that. I want some of these issues resolved, and we celebrate during our planning sessions. And I'm with him all the way. When I come back in 20 years to a planning session, I want it to be a big celebration of finally closing the achievement gap.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the comments of our colleagues concerning teaching and learning and that whole process. And I was going to say, when you said it first, I asked you a question, but I reflect, and it's a known fact, we've known it for years and years, the quality of education a child receives is directly tied back to the quality of the educator who stands before them each and every day, which echoes your heart. And it is difficult, it is extremely difficult to educate a child who is lacking in the skills, and to bring them up to standard over a period of time. It is difficult, but it takes a special person. And all of our teachers are special people, don't get them wrong. But I think, you know, the training process in dealing with certain areas, certain children, is what needs to be addressed. How is it that one teacher can reach a child in the same building, but a teacher next door can't? How is that possible? When I was in a classroom, I remember that, you know, there were some kids that came in my class that used to beat the doors down next door, you know? But how is that possible? I don't have the answer, even all these years, I don't have the answer. But I know it is within us. That's why I'm asking the question about, how do you get buy-in? Those principles that you're talking about. We also know that good teachers, believe it or not, follow good principles.
That's right.
Get that if they can. But that's our task. But I agree, but Madam Superintendent, you made a statement, and it just stung me, you did, because I hadn't thought about that, about the fact that the amount of money we're spending on our low-income, challenging schools is higher than other schools. I hadn't thought about that. But when you add in federal dollars, if you add in state dollars, that's what you're really talking about there, I think, you know? Because some schools don't get low, low-reward monies. Some schools don't get small kind of supplements. But that's a profound statement. I hadn't even thought about that.
So if we know, we know that the average per pupil expenditure Alexis said yesterday is, or not, no, the base, the base is about $6,200 per child. Carroll County, who we saw present to us this week, their per pupil expenditure is $15,000 per child. And we need to ask ourselves, if that's not enough...
What is enough?
What is enough?
Right. I agree with you on that. But I'm going to study that a little bit more as we go from month to month down. Because I hadn't thought about it that particular way. But what was it saying? We know all we need to know? To educate every child? And what's in those?
Ron Edwards.
Ron Edwards.
Yeah.
To educate every child, but the point is, do we really want to? I'm paraphrasing a bit here, or to sound, but it kind of, thank you for allowing me, but thank you for those comments, and we've got a job, my colleagues, we have a job. And I don't know about you, but the energy that I have left, I'm going to put it into it. But I see those kids, they work in my neighborhood, you know? They have their own little saying, oh, you got to blame, you know, you got to blame. I'm saying, all right, well, you know? But they need it. They need the love, they need the support, and they need the kindness of knowing that you are special. And I'm going to shut up. I get that, this kid. I'm talking about my kids, I just...
Thank you. I thought I heard some amen's from some of our advisors. I want to give them a chance to say anything if you would like to chime in on any reflection. Yes, please, Ms. Cametson.
So good morning. You know, there's a lot of things kind of in my head. I really just appreciate the last couple of days and all the things that we've learned, and even though we see challenges, you know, I'm still hopeful that we can do this work. You know, one of the things that, you know, I challenge us and want us to think about is that, you know, we've had really great conversations, and we've learned a lot, and we're nodding our heads, but not to allow these conversations to be in isolation, that when we make decisions, when we create plans, when we talk to groups, when we support superintendents and practitioners, that we are thinking about the things that we've learned and that we know, and that we are following up with what we're saying, that we believe. You know, I, when I look at our theme for this work session, NC Be the Change, and thinking about my school, and our theme this year is about being bold and being world changers, but it takes more than just knowledge, it takes action. And we have to be able to do that and keep that at the core of everything that we do. So I just challenge us, even beyond, you know, this work session, that when we're making decisions and creating plans, that we keep this at the core of what we do, so that we can actually see that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or reflections or thoughts, or things that stuck out in your mind? Yes, Ms. Ms. Ford.
Well, this is... Good morning. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Cametson, Mr. Ford, and to Dr. Townsend Smith, because I know what it takes to put on two days of work, right? And y'all did it, and it's, also takes courage to do the right thing and to have presentations that are about the right things. I agree with Mr. Hall. We know what is required of the work. The question is, are we brave enough to do it? That's the real question, to actually roll up our sleeves and do what we're supposed to do to ensure that every child receives an excellent education. So thank you for the opportunity to be there.
All right, Ms. Tipton Rogers?
Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Stevens, oh, very good. Ms. Stevens.
Yes, good morning. I wanted, it's been said other times, and this morning as well, that we should recruit teachers of color, but what I wanted to say is having brown skin does not make you a better teacher. So I believe we have to be strategic in our hiring so that we can get good teachers of color in front of our students. And we need to work to retain those good teachers. Thanks a lot. And I've enjoyed this morning, I absolutely loved listening to Ms. Ford. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? So I want to, as we close, I want to give special thanks to our advisors who are also presenters. Dr. Oxendine, who made a very fine presentation that brought us to our starting point, which was the Dr. Bridges report in the commission on which she served so many years ago, which no better illustration than just how devoted she's been to the education of our students over such a long period of time. And I want to thank Dr. Townsend Smith for her excellent leadership in this, and for Superintendent Truitt and her staff and their excellent leadership in presentations throughout this. So it was a, truly a team effort, and I want to thank everybody for the work that was going into it, and obviously, how well it was all done. So thanks to each of you. If I've forgotten to thank somebody, shame on me, but the thanks is extended nonetheless. So thank you to all of our presenters, and thank you for all the good work that was done. So with that background, Superintendent Truitt, can't rest on your laurels.
I'm too.
I now recognize you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. So I am incredibly excited to share with you the events of last month with something called the Green Strides Tour. And this was an incredible three-day visit in which the state of North Carolina hosted the United States Department of Education. And we were fortunate enough to have Deputy Secretary Cindy Martin and some of her team join us for three days, spanning nine schools and four counties in North Carolina, to recognize those schools, districts, and even a university who received the Green Strides Ribbon Award. So the Green Strides Ribbon Award, in case you don't know, is kind of like the blue ribbon, so we all know what blue ribbon schools are. Let's go to the next one. And the Green Ribbon Schools is a special award from the United States Department of Education that has three pillars that it is looking for in its applicants for this award. One is schools that reduce environmental impact and costs, two, improve the health and wellness of school, students, and staff, and three, provide effective environmental and sustainability education. And boy, did we see all three of these things during our three-day tour. So we have been participating in the Green Ribbon Program since 2012. We've had 15 schools over the last several years win these awards, three whole districts, and two post-secondary institutions. So the cohort for this year included these four institutions, which we did visit, Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, DC Virgo Prep, which is also in New Hanover. The Wake County School District as a whole received this award, which is quite amazing. And then UNC Wilmington was the post-secondary award. So there was an incredible amount of work that, any time you host a federal agency, there's a lot of work that goes into making that happen, and this was no exception. I need to give a special shout-out to Julie Pittman, Free Bird McKinney, Nathan Mountie, John Long, as well as Blair Rhodes and Mary Lee Gibson in our comms shop, who just really worked hard with the Department of Education to make this tour happen. The goals of the tour are to visit both past recipients and new recipients. It's important... It's important to look at past recipients because we want to see what they've continued to do and to see, you know, what's been working with, with everything that, that, that they're doing. Um, but what's really special about these tours is that they tend to be student-led. And I'll tell you, those of you who've done this before, there's nothing more special than going into a building, being greeted by students and then led on a tour by students. And, and that's what we saw time and time again throughout the Green Strides Tour. Um, so let's, let's go on to some specifics here. So a lot of the themes, and I do have pictures to share because the, the pictures really do um tell the story. But um, we, we, we saw a lot of um composting projects. We saw uh a focus on nutrition. We saw a lot, and this is of course one of my favorite things. We saw a lot of connections, even in elementary and middle schools, to the idea of workforce and jobs. And not just, not necessarily jobs that are green, although we did see that, but we also saw just a lot of focus on um what STEM education and how the applied learning that we saw could lead to a future job. So we started off in Wake County. We went to Abbott's Creek Elementary School, um where we were greeted by Principal Politrantham. Uh, we went to Athens Drive High School, um and we were greeted by the band, as well as Principal Stephen Maris. Um, and then we went to downtown Raleigh to Explorers Middle School, where Director Deborah Brown greeted us. So I'm really excited to share these, these pictures with you. The, the top-left picture wa, is a um, there was an outdoor story walk, which is something that I, I think my colleagues had seen before, but I had never seen it. Uh, where it was um s, integration of science and arts in an outside story walk. Um, the picture to the right of that, that's me and some students with some chickens um at Athens Drive High School, which is quite extraordinary. And we learned about um gender of chickens based on their earlobes. So I never really thought of chickens as having earlobes, but they do. And we were close enough to pet the chickens and, I mean, chickens are so common, but there's something special about being up close and personal with a chicken. It was, it was really, really funny. And what was really great is that the kids, I mean, when you just, when you, when you get to hear teenagers talk about anything that they're passionate about, it's a great day. And um, and, and these teenagers, some of whom were interested in going on to careers in ag, some not. But they loved these chickens and they had been with the chickens since the chickens were little. Um, the bottom-left picture is an art class that had integrated um uh STEM and arts and they were, they were painting the wind, which was a, a really beautiful lesson that we got to see. And then the picture on the bottom right, those children were having a physics lesson. Uh, these were middle schoolers and they were, you can't really tell in the picture, but they were using various materials to create roller coasters. And it was just, um, they were, it's one of those things where, you know, I used to say to teachers, what, what does, and what does student engagement sound like, look like, and smell like? And we definitely heard that student engagement when we walked in that room. Then Wednesday in Hoke and Cumberland Counties, we went to Sandy Grove Middle School um with Principal Tommy Jones. Douglas Berg High School with Principal um Dr. Zelena Taylor and Walker Spivey Elementary School with Principal Rachel Robinson. So we've got great examples of pictures here as well. So we saw a lot of um STEM work and gardening on this visit, as well as um drone technology, which was really, I mean, we, if, you, you all are, should be hearing a theme of drone technology because I've, I've talked about it like every month. We're seeing examples of drone technology and this had to do with solar panels as well. So using drone technology to investigate efficacy of solar panels. So um, very interesting connections there. And then you can see the ladies in their, in their garden. Um, absolutely, and we're, we're seeing more and more outdoor education across our state. Um, I, we've seen this in, in the eastern part of the state, the central part and the western part, where there's just um uh not just, let's, let's take our stuff and go sit outside, but intentional deliberate outdoor learning spaces. So we'll go to the next one. And then Thursday, we spent the day in New Hanover County. So we started off at Wrightsville Beach Elementary with Principal Jackson Norville. Then we went to D.C. Virgo Prep, which is one of our lab schools. Y'all remember Senate Bill five-nine-nine and the creation of our, of our lab schools? I uh remember when that legislation was passed and we all thought, how in the world are we going to create these lab schools in the, in the time given? But I'll tell you what, that, that lab school was absolutely incredible and it was amazing to, to see it having come to fruition. And then um, of course, that lab school's attached to UNCW, so um um we, we did, uh Dr. Dempsey greeted us along with Chancellor Sartorelli and we had a wonderful visit at um the Watson College of Education. So the top-left picture is Wrightsville Beach Elementary School. These children have the privilege of being at a school every day that is located on the water. It was absolutely beautiful. And the community built a dock so that the children could go out um uh and, and have an outdoor classroom. So they were fishing, they were using nets, they're looking at um wildlife. It was really fantastic. Um, to the right, you, th, this, this was at D.C. Virgo. There is a um, a gentleman there who's a grad student at um, at UNCW, Watson College of Education. And he is um teaching there and he's doing a lesson on growing um uh molds and fungi. And so if they, of course, the kids were just absolutely fascinated. But those are jar, jars of um, of, of mold. It was really, really incredible. This bottom-left picture, oh, the bottom-left picture is at UNCW. And these, this is a giant stand-up iPad. They, they can stand up or they can lay down and they are about the size of a person. And this was an anatomy class where students were, so, so there, there, in various places of the world, there were people who gave their loved ones to science. And these bodies have been sliced and scanned to be a, a, uh, an electronic virtual cadaver. And so instead of having a cadaver lab, which they, they were building, but they, they have these giant iPads. And so you can literally look at the whole body. You can um, you can take away all of the systems except the circulatory system or you could take away all of the systems except the muscular system. Um, it was absolutely fascinating and seeing the students, um, we were in their life sciences building and seeing the students engaged in the way that they were was, was just really special. And then finally, you see Dr. Taylor there on the right um in what was called a um, an action behavior room. And this was unlike anything we had ever seen. This is a room where elementary-age children can go when they need to take ten. So this, this is an example of reducing exclusionary discipline practices. So this is something that would allow de-escalation to occur before something might raise to the level of a disciplinary practice that would exclude someone from school. Um, this is a, a, obviously monitored by adults, but it is a place where students can come um to talk through their feelings while they are moving. But it's also a place where students who might need to move while they learn could, um, could do so. So if they wanted to do their math while they're swinging their legs, they, they can do that. Um, they can, this, this, this was like a little obstacle course that you see Dr. Taylor on. Um, and then there are um all kinds of information around the room about connections between movement and, and the brain and learning. So we wanted to just spend a second to talk about how this aligns to Operation Polaris. Um, so you'll, you will have noticed in those pictures that um Dr. Harvey and Dr. Taylor accompanied us on those full three days. Um, of course, Student Support Services is one of the pillars of Operation Polaris. And the Green Strides Tour really allowed us to um have a laser focus on student nutrition needs, social, emotional learning needs, um, school facilities, um, how, how those three things are being done on a day-to-day basis in a way that prioritizes the student needs. You know, because, you know, sometimes we do things in a way that prioritizes adults instead of students. But these three schools had it right. They, these, these things were done with students at the center. And of course, this is leading to broader conversations for, for all of us about how we support students, both while they're at school and not at school. We continue to see districts committed to not just feeding students at school, but feeding communities. Um, how are we uplifting academic and non-academic needs? Uh, there was a time when I'm sure the, that the, the idea of an action behavior room would, would not have been well-received, but um, hopefully those days are past. Um, and how are we innovating and building classrooms to be good stewards of the environment? As well as to bring in ideas about how these things all combine to lead to careers. And again, we, we just, we all learned so much, we had such great conversations with one another. Um, there's a lot of people in this room who were part of that tour. Um, and again, thank you to everyone who um was involved in organizing that tour. Um, and I think, I think there's one more slide I just remembered, our Now What slide. Um, so we are going to continue our promising practices and best practices work um and uh continue to find ways to share these with, um, especially as we continue to have conversations about health and wellness and those non-academic needs across our state. Um, we want to identify sustainable practices that could be replicated. Um, again, we'd love seeing these, these outdoor classrooms and, and gardens. And the kids of all ages absolutely love that. Um, we are continuing to see more certificate and license programs, licensure programs in our middle and high schools. And we want more schools and districts to apply to be a Green Ribbon School. Um, you know, I, my, my team sometimes gets frustrated with me because my, sometimes my first instinct is to say, do they really want us to come and visit? It's so much work. What, we're going to interrupt everything? You know, is it, is it really worth all the time and effort? And of course, the answer is always yes, because the schools love to get visits from the public. They, and not just me, they love to get visits from everybody. And teachers love to be lifted up during these visits. They love to show off everything that they're doing as individuals every day to meet the needs of their students. And I just continue to share with you the amazing things that my team and I see when we go into districts. The love, the support, the um, the heart and soul of these teachers over the past twenty months that continues to, to beat and continues to love on their students. And I, I just, I, I leave every time saying, we're not worthy, we're not worthy. And um, I, 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 it's my hope that if uh our members of the board, if you've not been in a, in a school lately, that, that you will take that opportunity. Because it is um a thing of beauty to see our, our students' needs being met on a day-to-day basis in the way that we all have had the privilege to see. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Truitt. Are there any questions or comments for Superintendent Truitt?
Do we have a um, maybe a list of where these schools are around the state? I mean, are they pretty much dotted around the regions? The schools that are taking part or?
In the Green Strides, yes.
Would be good to know.
So, so this visit included um uh both past winners and current winners. But the current winners were the, the um Wake County as a district, um, Hoke and Cumberland and um uh New Hanover Counties.
But are there others that are getting in the process of this?
Yeah, uh, yes. I mean, there's, they, they do the awards. Is it, I'm trying to remember if it's every year or every other year, but yeah.
It's good to know.
Yeah, there's lots, yeah.
All right, not seeing any others. Thank you very much, Superintendent Truitt. We will now proceed to our committee reports. I remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent in any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call. We will begin with Mr. Wendell Hall for Government and Community Affairs Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and good morning to all once again. Uh, my name is Jay Wendell Hall. Uh, I chair uh the Legislative Community Affairs Committee uh with the Vice Chair, Ms. Jill Camnitz, Camnitz, I don't know what we'll call it, something different. But anyway, do apologize for this uh pronunciation of that, of your last name. Uh, we are proud to present some additional information to the board, uh update uh the board's uh uh directions. Of going out and trying to find and identify uh those districts that's involved in the community side of developing uh programs to help the whole child, develop the whole child initiative. Uh, yesterday, of course, we've heard, this week, we've heard a lot about that and the equity side. Uh, yesterday evening, of course, we heard from Rockland County, uh their efforts in, in the mental health issue. And we're going to talk a little bit more about uh things that have affected children over the last sixteen months that maybe we've forgotten about and, but right now I'm going to ask uh Mr. uh Free Bird McKinnney if he will come forth and start us with our uh report. Uh, we do have Ms. Julie Pittman, Dr. Stigall, and Ms. Kristy Van Aken, I think that's her last name, uh, whom I met this week, uh sitting at the table. I didn't know this was the lady that she came up to me, introduced herself to me, uh, who would also report this morning for us. Uh, Ms. McKinnney?
Good morning, Superintendent Truitt, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Treasurer Falwell, board members, advisors, colleagues here at DPI and the board, and our friends across this great state of the Shire. My colleagues, Ms. Pittman, Dr. Stigall, and Ms. Van Aken are grateful for the leadership of this committee's chairs and the opportunity to share with you today. So we uh, we wanted to start echoing um uh the, the committee's Vice Chair Camnitz's words, "Listening starts with all of us." And I think sometimes it's as simple as seeing and being seen. Um, and uh, we were invited to attend a series of football games across the state during the month of October. Uh, and this was- month of October, and this one really stuck out to us. There's a story here, and this was the Friday Night Lights event of Tuscola versus Pisgah High School. And it reminded me of one of my best friends, Patrick Henry's song called "Living in a Football Town." And there are a couple of phrases that always kind of jump out to me, because I didn't grow up in a situation where we had, you know, an event like this game right here. 12,000 people, the 50-50 winner won $9,000. You know, and so just to kind of put those things and encapsulate some of the moments. You know, a couple of lines from that song are, you know, "A hundred yards of sacred ground, living in a football town. Life is simpler than everything working towards first and ten. Behind the field, there's a railroad track. All-stars leave, salesmen come back. People come from miles around, living in a football town." You know, and I hope that these pictures do justice to what our team got to experience. This is literally sitting on the top of the middle school with Principal Graham Hayes and Assistant Superintendent Jill Barker looking down on this event. Tuscola side over on the left, Pisgah side over on the right, and just a packed night. And again, there's a story here, and it's a story of resilience, and we've shared about Haywood County before, dealing with the flood and overcoming, you know, their typical friend, the Pigeon River, who got a little bit violent at times and destroyed the Pisgah Stadium. So they moved this game, and this game is called the Hill versus the Mill. And if you look there, it reminds me a lot of Kenan Stadium, where the trees are still taller than the stadium up on the hill. But if you look here, this is the Mill. So this is Pisgah, and you can see the Mill in the very background, the Pigeon River is right there on the right. And this really brings the community together. And you can see here on the left side, you know, Tuscola versus Pisgah, they were friends when we were having and sharing dinner together, but when the ball kicked off, it was a little different. You can see Senator Corbin there in the middle joined us to take part in this night. And this was a story of resiliency, is a story of community, is a story of pride. It was a story of honoring service and first responders. It was a story of support for the growth of their students, both academically, and we could talk about their academic growth and success in this district, but also just the physical and the personal growth of these students. It's also a story of returning to normalcy. This was a packed stadium. It was the first time, really personally, I didn't think about the pandemic, and I know our team kind of, you know, really talked about that. But lastly, it's just the power of what our schools mean to our communities and to the individuals that were there, to those all-stars that went back and returned as salesmen to watch their sons and daughters and the band and the cheer and the dance team and then on the football field. So just wanted to say thank you for Haywood County's gracious hosting of our team on this night and wanting to celebrate the Hill versus the Mill. So now, working on the current trends that Chair Hall and Vice Chair Camnick has tasked this team with, and we're going to provide multiple examples today of continuing what the planning and work session set up. I think this was one of the most beautiful parts of the last several days, as we saw this partnership and the power of support between the districts and DPI. And we're going to start today with Whole Child and Healthy, excuse me, Whole Child, Whole School, and Whole Community Initiatives and Programs. And did want to bring up, and this was something that we're really working hard on, and I'm very excited, we've got a meeting coming up that Vice Chair Camnick has tasked our team with, and really building out like those next steps, data and evaluation and analysis of these initiatives and programs that we share. We'll be working with Dr. Maher, Dr. Mullenix, Dr. Korn, and Lynn Barber, and that team specifically. So like echoing that, what's next? Like, okay, now that we're seeing this, we're scouting, we're seeing these examples and these bright lights across the state, how do we then build on the capacity of those? How does Dr. Mullenix help us to build what we see into that promising practice? And then being able to share that out. So we'll provide some examples of that today. And then just looking at the data dashboard, I wanted to highlight particularly Rockingham County and looking at their discipline and seeing that line going down, I think was, is a direct reflection of their commitment and their dedication to what we witnessed yesterday, and that came out of a visit that we had very recently. So if, and I'm going to briefly go through these, because they did such a phenomenal job yesterday of tying this all together. But what we witnessed in Rockingham County was a commitment and a dedication to student health and well-being that was also brought about by Project Aware and ACT Debate. And we've talked about this several times, so there's just, again, an informational slide that shares that. But as you heard yesterday, Superintendent Rodney Shotwell and Dr. Stephanie Ellis, who is their Executive Director of Behavioral Health and Crisis Intervention and Student Safety, and then our colleagues here at the department, Dr. Heidi Austin, who is the Project Aware Director, and Beth Rice, who is our Social Emotional Learning Lead on the IAB's team, as well as the leader of the SCL Implementation Team. And this was one of those great moments where the whole entire team was able to see what Rockingham's dedication looks like, and they were able to then kind of bring that back to our planning and work session yesterday. And I was struck by something that the chair said yesterday about the integration of the director's work during the panel. And this is another brilliant example. We saw Dr. Cynthia Martin and Dr. Bev Emery and Dr. Catherine Edmond share out about what their team has been doing to support Tyrell County and Robinson County, or Robinson, excuse me, and that powerful partnership. And I think this is another one of those examples that we can really look to. The next couple of slides are just some of the pictures. We are joined by Representative Hurdle, who also is former law enforcement, also former school board, so really has some unique perspectives on the legislative side. And as you listened to the presentation yesterday, that unique partnership with the law enforcement, you know, as Dr. Ellis was sharing, that literally if something had happened in the community or in the neighborhood of a particular student, they would just make a simple message to the principal and the school, and then that child will be handled with care. And I think that's a really unique opportunity for us to look at the strength and the power of the partnerships, and in a very positive way, how we're working with the law enforcement and school safety. The next couple of slides are reiterating that there is data collection to support this. And that's another thing that we want to build on as our team works with the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration, is how can we make that data more accessible? And then how can we use that in our advocacy efforts to not only duplicate this across the state, but to garner additional resources where they're needed for districts who would like to do something as comprehensive as the infrastructure and the continuum of Rockingham County schools? A couple of the highlights of this particular visit, we were able to see their day treatment program led by Serena Hooker. This was a very unique opportunity, and again, Dr. Ellis referenced this yesterday, where if there are students who really need that additional care, if it's a long-term suspension, rather than they go home and sit and not feel that, the ability to kind of build on that student mental health and that personal responsibility, they go to this day treatment center. We walked around, there are behavioral health specialists there, really engaged teachers, and they build this environment for students to not only, another level of self-actualization, but in a tiered way, get them re-entering into their schools. And it was such a profound experience to see that, all of these teams working together, it represents their infrastructure and their continuum. So again, Dr. Shotwell shared out their county's commitment in his discussions with their county commissioners and school board for those additional behavioral health specialists. But then also, these teams that they put together that are very specific to individualized programs. And then we had a chance to visit Huntsville Elementary School with our team to see how they implement and integrate SCL lessons into their everyday classroom learning. We then wanted to see a district where they did not have the Project Aware Activate Grant, but was also showing a commitment to this at multiple levels. And so we went all the way out to the east, Eddington, Chawan, and looked at their student mental health support, and had a really unique opportunity to walk through the beginning of their school day. So in the videos that you saw with Rockingham County, very similar situations where they integrate those morning meetings, and Principal Michelle Newsom actually has what she calls Cubby Time every morning, where she uses SCL skills and builds them into morning announcements. She has Cubby Paws, which were their like kind of shout-outs to specific students who really just need to be lifted up for their efforts. They're mindful moments. We saw the calm corners in the classroom. They were also a calm room, which is where, in the bottom left-hand corner, we're standing in there. And what it is, it just really showed a district's commitment to these efforts. And then we ended the morning with speaking with Regional Teacher of the Year, Jen Atkinson, about how she, as a teacher, not only integrates this into her classroom, but also, as Mr. Ford mentioned earlier, how this is a way for the staff also to feel that social emotional learning and that student mental health, but then at the staff level as well. So it was really great to hear her perspective there. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Pittman.
Good morning. So a second focus that the committee has charged us with is coordinating and consolidating partnerships with PSUs and statewide organizations whose primary focus is on developing and implementing teacher recruitment and retention strategies, in a lot of cases particularly with educators of color. So as you know, there are several organizations across the state who are focusing on this work, many of whom have had recent reports, events, and convenings. And we've briefly touched on trends in the Latinx educational realm in the October Board Meeting, and some topics bubbled up after that that really focused on desiring more data around this. So luckily, the Latinx Ed had a summit a couple of weeks after that, actually, I believe the next week, and we were able to hear from Rebecca Tippett from Carolina Demography, who reported on exactly this type of data that we needed. So here you'll see just a summary of some of that data, that North Carolina has 1.1 million Hispanic population, which is 15 times larger than it was in 1990. That 1 in 9 North Carolinians are Hispanic, but 1 in 6 North Carolina children ages 0 to 17 are Hispanic. So if you look at the next slide, you'll be able to see how that growth has really catapulted in a more visual way. So if we're thinking about 1 in 6 of our students that are Hispanic, you'll note that that's a pretty significant growth and something that we would need to be able to attend to in the work that we're doing. So on the next slide, you'll be able to see, we've linked in here a little bit of information about the Latinx Ed Summit, and you can, if you want to dig into some more of that information, there's a link at the top of that in your notes where you can listen to all the recordings and really see some of the work, hear some of the voices from the field, specifically from teachers who are in the classroom, who are able to give their own perspective about what it's like being a Latinx teacher, what it's like teaching Latinx students, what it's like teaching all students. So on the next slide, you'll be able to see, we briefly touched on this in the past as well, that Latinx Ed is launching SMS NC, which is a listening tour that will engage parents, communities, educators, and students as we work together to identify the needs and promising practices across the state. They're launching a listening tour in all of the eight regions of the state. In these meetings, we'll be able to see how particular communities are actually working to build better health and well-being of all their students and their staff and schools across North Carolina. Next slide, please. I think this is, Dr. Stigall is going to come up and talk about a little bit more of this work that we saw in Burke County.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned, 1 in 6 students being Hispanic Latinx creates a new set of opportunities for us as educators. One of the privileges we have as board members and department staff is we have tremendous ability as a collective group. What we've seen over the last year and a half with the pandemic is the ability that the districts need from us right now is availability. And being out and seeing them and hearing them and talking to them and knowing their needs is a key piece of that. Burke County is an example of what happens when we're available and connected with LEAs. Every LEA in community has a story to tell, even more so every community in LEA have a success story to tell. And Burke's success stories want apparent engagement, immigrant support, champions of their plight that help non-English-speaking families navigate, migrate through the barriers of learning how to integrate to a new community, new country, new school district, and thrive. Burke has a high concentration of immigrant families from Guatemala. The gentleman you see in the bottom right is Mr. Pedro. You've heard his name mentioned before here. Mr. Pedro was a parent who saw a need with his own children, but other children in the school, his children, his children went to, he wanted to be part of the solution, because he saw that there were a number of students coming from Guatemala and other places who had trouble communicating, understanding the needs of the, how you move through school, parents wanting to know how they support their child, and he stepped in the gap to help families as they, as he too was a first-generation citizen from Guatemala. He gained their trust and became the welcome wagon, for lack of a better term, for Burke County schools. And the school district saw the value he was adding and actually saw enough to hire him as a staff member to be part of that connection to the parents and that community engagement. Student success skyrocketed, parent engagement improved drastically, community and school partnerships multiplied, all because one person was available and filled a need. Over time, two other parent engagement educators were added, and the top-left corner, you'll see those other two with him. The young lady on the left was actually, her family were missionaries in Guatemala, and so she had, was born in America, raised in America, but spent a great deal of her youth in Guatemala, and so she understood the culture, the needs, the support, the language, and has served as a great resource. And then the young lady on the right was actually a student, I believe, from, she a first generation from Guatemala herself, and grew up in the district and has been a great resource as well. Now Burke's entire LEA has become a beacon of promise on parent and community engagement. Quantitative and qualitative measures all reflect the impact that just a few people who stepped up when the need presented itself can make. Now through an article that was written about this visit we had and published, other LEAs are reaching out to Freebird and the other team members, asking if we could share the story, connect the districts, collaborate to support their similar needs, and learn from Burke County, who's doing this well. These promising practices shared should not only be regionalized and hidden, but many communities have similar needs that can learn from it. Our visits are highlighting success stories. These stories are being shared, tweaked, replicated, and magnified across the state, and these waves of connectivity are what we must continue to lift up and magnify as we navigate so much uncertainty and challenge.
Wanted to briefly highlight a couple of more initiatives that we're working on. And currently, there's several of us on Superintendent Truitt's team that are attending the Elevate NC Higher Education led by Hunt Institute, and that focus is really on students and their access and needs. I think one of the most important takeaways from our first meeting was the importance of the pipeline development human capital as it comes to K-12. Many of the individuals and education leaders that were in that room and on this team are higher level, but I think we are all discussing, particularly with our community college partners, how to build that 2-plus-2 pipeline. So I'm very excited, the next meeting for this will be in January, so Mr. Wallace and I will make sure that we report on that following up. Also, we'll be attending Listening to the North Carolina 10 on November 10. And this is an effort by the John M. Endowment Hunt Institute, Creed, Ed NC, and My Future NC, and Listening to Improve Post-Secondary experiences and outcomes from our North Carolina's 10 historically black colleges and universities. So we're very excited about this. They have actually had previous meetings, but our team has been invited to this one, so we will report back. And also wanted to share out, the Color of Education also took place recently, and this presentation was developed prior to that being concluded, so we'll report back in December on that several, and this boardroom alone, we're on that. So we will be reporting on that. And then lastly, North Carolina Stride Teacher Recruitment Action Plan was released, and so we wanted to highlight some of their recommendations. December 7 will be the next meeting where this group led by BSC will meet. Now I want to bring up our colleague, Ms. Van Aken.
Good morning, everybody. Very excited to report to you today.
Very excited to report to you today on a wonderful project in Brunswick County called Project Search. So this is a very cool workforce initiative that is focused on E C, our exceptional children. And often, when we think about employability, when we think about workforce, we have to remember that it's every child, right? It's all children that matter. And so we wanted to highlight this particular promising practice, which is going to be led by Dr. Angie Mullenix in the back, as one of our first highlights in the area of workforce development and internships. So Project Search in Brunswick County focuses on the E C population, and it's business-led. So that to us was as critical as we think about workforce cultivation, making sure that there's a business partner that's involved in the project as well. It's a one-year school-to-work program that gives these students a very meaningful in-work experience. So again, going back to the partners, it wasn't just the school district, it was also Brunswick County, it was also the community college and Novant Health. And every one of those partners had to buy in in a very meaningful way, both in terms of resources of people and in resources in terms of money and contributing to the success of the program. So the Department of Health and Human Services and their Evoque Rehab also an important partner in this. So when we think about this, we think about that commitment, right? And that partnership that really comes in. And something that Mr. Hall, Ms. White, and I talked about yesterday is when we think about, you know, how do we lift up our children and make sure that they are ready for the post-secondary plan of their choice, that we are bringing in the right partners to make that happen? So what are some of the outcomes? Let's really focus on what are the deliverables, because it's not just a feel-good story, right? This is really about making sure that these students, like every student, is ready for a career when they leave high school. So every student, every student, all students are on a career journey, and we have to remember that, right? From kindergarten on, every student is on a career journey. So how do we start to really focus that in our educational journey? This required complete community buy-in. So everyone in the community really got behind this, including the teachers. And that was actually one of the coolest moments, was thinking or watching the teacher and the students interact together when asked, because you know, E C students may not feel, you know, we come in, all of these adults into a room with children that maybe feel a little overwhelmed. And that teacher had this beautiful way of coaxing, you know, conversation and getting them to tell us their story, and it was just the coolest thing. And what we also had the opportunity to see were grateful parents, parents that really cared about their students also having a successful work pathway. So in conclusion, as we look at this and all the hard work that went into it, now we see multiple departments inside the hospital that want one of these interns as part of their teams, too. So we hope to be able to replicate this kind of program, to lift it up as part of promising practices, and you'll see more about this in the coming months. Thank you.
So finally, or next to finally, I just want to reiterate what we talked about at the end of the day yesterday, and that's our upcoming AIM Conference. You'll be getting some information about from Dr. Townsend Smith later this week. The AIM Conference is November 29th, 30th, and December 1st. We have teams of folks from schools from all across the state, including representation from all of our lab schools, many of our charter schools. We're going to have about 1,000 people who are going to be there, and that will include people from within DPI, as well as some of our community partners who'll be presenting. So if you turn to the next page, you'll be able to see a brief overview of the schedule. It does start on Monday morning and goes through Wednesday just before lunch. While Wednesday is the next state board meeting committee day, if you come to the breakfast that morning to be able to hear Coffee with Catherine and the panel that she'll be leading with, our two teachers of the year and two principals of the year serve as your advisors that morning, we'll make sure that you get back in time to start your board meeting right on time and maybe even grab a coffee before you walk in the boardroom. You'll also see lots of other incredible things that are on that page, including some things that we're going to be talking about, the system of education, and hearing student voices on Tuesday, which I'm really excited about, to have several student voices that are going to be live there to present how their public school educational experience has impacted their lives. We've also partnered with NCISBRA, who's putting together a video for us to hear many other student voices from across the state on that exact topic. We are going to have some fun networking events, like a food truck rodeo on Monday night, and an AIM Fest where you'll be able to participate in lots of incredible activities that are school club-like. For instance, I think Dr. Angie Mullenix is leading some PBL work with us. We've got Dr. Ashburn, one of her teachers, Betsy Graves, who's a dance teacher, and some of her students are going to be coming in, leading some fun dance. My brother, who actually teaches at Panther Creek High School, is a theater arts teacher, and his wife, who teaches in Chapel Hill, Carboro, are doing arts and theater. And then lots of other things that our DTL team, led by the great and awesome Jill Darrow, will be leading us through some incredible things that our students experience on a day-to-day basis. But more importantly, on the next slide, you'll see a draft list of all of the breakout sessions and how they align to the six strands of the conference, and how our teachers and other educators who'll be there will be able to experience a wide wealth of opportunities for digging into things that they believe they need more assistance with in order to bulk up on how they are doing the work of education in their own schools and districts. You'll see that all of these things align with Operation Polaris, tag words like literacy, student support services, accountability, learning recovery and acceleration, human capital, and school and district transformation. But also, as we've talked about over the last couple of days, and even last month's board meeting, is how Operation Polaris aligns with, and we are working to find an implementation plan that we can all work together with the state board's strategic plan and action framework. And that work is going to be led by our regional directors, our charter school directors, and also the great Laura Billbo Berry, who's going to be able to help us with some of our other schools that are going to be in attendance, and how we're able to really pull all of those things together so that our schools can align their strategic plans with that of the state. So we're really hopeful that you'll be able to come and participate with lots of our of our school agencies there. Finally, in our, I'm going to recap a little bit on DC Virgo that we heard from with Superintendent Truitt. And this is our spotlight school that Chair Davis tasked us with, really looking at spotlight. So I want to dig in a little bit more and add on to what Superintendent Truitt talked about with DC Virgo Preparatory Academy. Two things that have stood out to me over the last 11 months that I've been in this role, that I've gleaned from Superintendent Truitt, which is also echoed in the work that I've watched and experienced over the years that this board has done, are these things. Number one, I see you and I hear you. And number two, now what? So while we got a glimpse of DC Virgo from Superintendent Truitt's presentation on the Green Strides Tour, the story of DC Virgo and the lives that it has touched is not just that for its students, but also for their families and their community. Mr. Ford talked earlier about radical imagination, and DC Virgo lives this. And another way that it re-envisioned other ways that kids and students can really live out that radical imagination, that what can they do to really change their lives? And how can they really utilize their resources to make that happen? So you see a picture of Principal Sabrina Hill Black, and she is representative of everything that this school does. She is married to that school. She loves the work that her teachers do. She is engaged in her community and engages her community in that school. She knows those kids and their families, and she offers them opportunity and promise for the things that they can do to change their lives. If you go to the next page, you'll see one of the things that stood out most to me about DC Virgo Preparatory Academy when I first visited over three years ago was its motto, that DC Virgo is where families come to school together. And I just think that's a really great mantra for a school to have, that it's not just about the kids. But we've heard it today with Dr. Stegall in the last couple of days, that we can't just do school between teacher and student. We have to involve our parents, our families, our communities, and our stakeholders in order to really build the strongest possible opportunities for our students. You'll see that DC Virgo is led by a strong leader, but all of the people who are involved in DC Virgo are leaders, from the minister down the road, who comes and opens the door for kids every morning, every single morning. And when he's not there, they ask where he is. To the parents who come and engage in the kids' work every single day, from UNCW and their graduate students and professors, who not only painted steps and redecorated rooms in the building, but who are also teaching classes alongside their teachers. And everywhere in between, we saw kids as young as kindergarten leading our tours throughout that school and showing us what they were learning. You can see that they not only have that action-based learning room, but they also have another space led by their school's social worker, who really helps kids and teachers come into a space and make sure that they are communicating well together, that they are balancing their lives well, and they are ready to go back into the classroom in order to learn and excel every day. I think you can see just a recap of some other pictures that we saw. One of the pictures that I love, and I've seen this in schools before, is their multiplication table stair step, where kids can learn their multiplication tables as they are walking from one part of the campus to the next. Every inch of that school campus is used for learning, and every breath that every single person takes on that school campus is living a life of future and promise and hope for their students. From Sabrina Hill Black, the principal, New Hanover County Schools, UNCW, that community and its parents, they see their kids and they imagine radically to ensure success, hope, dreams, vision, content, health, safety, love, and the future of each and every kid who crosses the threshold there. We saw this and we see it, not just in DC Virgo, but in the stories that we hear from schools all across the state. So how can we learn from what our schools are doing? And how can we use it to now help all of our students in North Carolina to align the strategic, so that we can align the strategic plan, Operation Polaris? And ultimately, all the work that we're doing from our directors and all of the people in their organizations, to our teachers and our parents and our families and our communities to make North Carolina the best place to live and learn and grow and thrive for each and every student. Thank you.
You all have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, Dr. Oxenden.
Thank you very much. Very informative. I really paid a lot of attention to all of it, but zeroed in on the lab school piece. Just a question from my own knowledge. Do we track the achievement of lab schools? Are they part of our EVO system? Do the students take the EOCs, EOGs rather? Okay, so how do we, is all of that, are the data filtered through, does it flow through the Board of Governors?
I will follow up on that and see how the data is.
I would just like to know a little bit more about how those kids are doing in those labs. That's very a vague concept, looking at lab schools as a laboratory.
Well, and one of the, I know that currently there's deliberation right now to add additional lab schools to, you know, so that, I think that goes to the core of what Superintendent Truitt talked about, is honing in on the data and if it is working and they're excelling, then we need to duplicate this. I'll follow up on that. Our team will take a look at that and get back to you. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Hey, Free Bird, how are you? I was just really excited to hear all of the great things happening across our state. One of the things that I was holding on, I've been holding on to was what Superintendent Truitt said at the beginning of her presentation about how our districts really enjoy our visits, and how sometimes you do feel like you're inconveniencing them to even come in by sometimes, because, you know, you don't want to interrupt the learning and the great things that are taking place. But this is truly another example of just being able to highlight those wonderful things, and they love to show off the wonderful things that they are doing. I'm on district number 38 this coming up week, and I can honestly say, it has been very empowering and uplifting to see the students and my colleagues really digging into the work and doing the things that are best for children. I really love how you all were talking about those family engagement specialists and the power that they are playing in the communities that are growing so rapidly in our state. And the other part about that is, I can speak to that as well. In my time in Yakima County Schools, I saw the power of having a Latino teacher of color in the classroom, actually speaking in English and in Spanish, and breaking down base-ten blocks for our children. So when we think about the power that can have an impact that's going to be having for that child and their success, in that case mathematically, it does make the work that we do here very powerful, and I just truly appreciate that. And I thank you for lifting up the, both of the summits, the Latino Ed Summit, as well as the Color of Education Summit, because that is a part of our strategic plan, is making sure that we recruit and retain. And part of that recruitment and retention is reaching out to teachers and asking them the things about what's working and what's not working, what can we do to really support you in the work for children? Because at the end of the day, we already know the most impactful person in front of those kids are those teachers. So we want to make sure that they feel fully supported. And again, I do want to raise up, I know that right now, I don't know if anyone knows, but right now we have, I know two of the schools that I've visited, Elkin Middle and Blue Ridge Elementary are going to be recognized today as Blue Ribbon Schools in Washington, D.C., today. So when we think about those, the great things that people are doing to close gaps, because that's specifically what they're there for, I want to definitely make sure we lift up those wonderful schools who are doing that work, and how we can make sure that those collaborations and those ideas and the tools and systems that are working for those districts are pushed out across the state. I know myself, Maureen, and our regional team of teachers are working hard to make sure those collaborations take place, which then takes us to the AIM Conference that's going to be happening, where that collaboration can truly happen authentically, and we can network and network for the betterment, again, of children. So it's all about them at the end of the day, and I really appreciate this presentation. So I just wanted to say that.
Anyone else?
Not a vice chair? As you can see, this committee is committed, energetic, involved in this task that was given to the, given to us by the board chair. I do say to the vice chair, we're not trying to take the time that Bizop takes to present. We're challenging. That's my goal, yeah. But when we keep talking about good things, it's hard to just cut it off that's going on out in the district. Hopefully next month, we're going to talk about a program, I hope we'll get some information more on it, about FAWLS. FAWLS as, where's Mr. Wallace? Is Wallace in here? What is that program, was it a middle school? FAWLS?
FAWLS on Patrol.
FAWLS on Patrol. That you might, we want to share with this committee outstanding. But if you see some of those FAWLS, you will see what patrol really means. But when a community comes together to support a school change occurs, things happen. And we have those things happening here in North Carolina, and we just love to highlight them for the board, for the state, and others, because in isolation... them for the board, for the state, and others, because in isolation, it's not noticeable. But when you put it out in the public, hey, it's happening. Things are happening. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Free Bird? Here in, now, I do know that we've taken 15 minutes of your committee report, and we'll give it back to you next month.
I'll probably need it.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
I now recognize Ms. Amy White for two committee reports, two's better than one, School Turnaround and Education Innovation in Charter Schools.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Okay, folks, so, you know, I like using object lessons. So when you think about a fire, it's a crisis, right? And what happens when there's a fire? We send out fire trucks with sirens and with loud blazing horns, and we announce that we are fighting the crisis, right? So that fire is COVID, and we came in with horns blaring and sirens, and as loud as we could, we've thrown everything we can to battle the crisis. What happens after a fire to the house that's been on fire? I mean, it's waterlogged, everything in the house is in disarray, right? Are you with me?
Totally in charge.
So we've had this crisis, which has been COVID, but I want to highlight Dr. Catherine Edmonds and Dr. Cynthia Martin and Ms. Julian Garber for being the reconstruction team and the work that they have done to go in quietly, because when a fire happens and after the sirens are gone, you don't really take notice to what's going on inside that house as it's being rebuilt. So the idea of restart and reconstruction and work that's done behind the scenes by teams who silently but stealthily provide everything that's needed to get a school back up on its feet. It's the work that's been done over the past year by this incredible team of leaders. And so today, as a part of this report, by the way, I chair this committee and Mr. James Ford shares that responsibility for me, this work did not stop just because we were in the middle of a crisis. This work continued as they worked with schools to identify the gaps that those schools needed to continue to provide educational support on their journey towards student success. Today, we've been charged with providing a report to you on the state summary of academic gain in the restart schools across our state. As you know, because of waivers, because of COVID-19, we are not able to provide you with the academic data that we're required to give as a result of DSTR-040. But we do have a report for you today, and at the podium, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Ms. Julian Garber to walk us through the amazing work that has continued during this pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. White. Good morning, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, board members. My name is Julie Garber, and I'm delighted to serve in the role of Reform Model Support Lead for District and Regional Support, like Ms. White shared with you. I'm here to share the Restart Annual Report summary from December 2020, that Restart Annual Report. It's always important to begin, we always align with your State Board goals, and as you can see here, we align specifically with goal number two. Specifically in Objective Seven, you see the growth measure by subgroup, and restart schools align with this. We use this as a part of their tracking. And specifically in Component One, you see that restart schools are expected to meet or exceed annual expected growth. I do want to give you a little brief reminder and overview of the policy updates that you have put in place since, to provide a foundation for you of this summary. Right at the beginning of March 2020, before we heard the word COVID-19, you all provided some updates to the restart policy, specifically defining academic gain and then the components of academic gain, clarifying what continued authorization meant in a five-year cycle and also continued authorization workflow. And then, due to COVID-19 in May of that same year, we had to come back and add a COVID-19 statement at the top of the policy that extended that five-year cycle to a six-year cycle. And then clarified for you all and for those reporting that the annual report would not include a review of the performance data, but would still include reporting on restart flexibilities that were utilized during the 1920, 20 school year. And then finally, as a reminder, last December 2020, we added, you added, an expressed commitment to the model for the duration of the entire monitoring cycle. So that gives you a little bit of a reminder of where we've been. We currently now have 152 restart schools across the state. In this table, you see them, they are tracked by cohort because they begin, and in that cycle of monitoring by their first year of implementation. And so you see that table there. For the sake of our reporting, for the December 2020 report, there were only 120 schools, so providing you with that foundation, that during this specific report that I'm talking about, we are only talking about 120 out of the 152. And you can see them there by cohort broken down. So a reminder from that last report that we shared, during the last report, when we were able to report, we identified for you that we had schools that were above the expectations for what we were looking for, meeting these expectations and below expectations. Specifically, just to give you a quick just reminder of the components of academic gain, this is how we're tracking and monitoring the progress of these schools. We have five components of academic gain, recurring low performing, then growth status, achievement score, subgroup growth status, and then flexibility outcomes. And the reason, of course, that's a different color is because those outcomes and goals and results are defined by the school. And so they have the opportunity to communicate how they're using the flexibilities and identify the measure and the progress that they're communicating, how they're using those flexibilities. So again, as a summary reminder, when we came to you last with the report, we had 21 schools that were above expectations, 65 schools who are meeting these expectations, and then 21 schools who were not meeting expectations, and we call that not on track to meet academic gain in that, what was originally a five-year cycle. So that's the background set for you, so we've set the stage, as well as Ms. White reminding us at the beginning. So now, because during that 1920 school year, we had a waiver from the federal government and from our General Assembly that there would be no performance assessments that year. And so because of that, in this, those same academic gain results for that, these 120 schools, that kind of reporting was not calculated because it was simply not available. And so what you see on the screen is those three middle columns, they were simply not available for us to calculate. The schools, however, did continue to communicate their flexibilities and what flexibilities they used, and we certainly continue to monitor these schools. And I will say that based on that monitoring, we continued with the data that we had available, and so we continued with those 21 schools, making sure that we were focusing on them. But we built a system of support, and we built a strong system of support. I'd like for you to think about this slide from the bottom up. And so that first foundation that we had the opportunity to build is for all restart schools. And so those components that you see first are for all of our restart schools, and then moving up to the top, we specifically identified support for schools, these same 21 that are not on track, they received more personalized support. So personalized review of their feedback from their reports, personalized review from their school improvement planning, personalized and ongoing professional learning. So we've had this opportunity to build a strong system of support. As a review of the flexibility specifically, we did share that they were able to tell us what specifically they used. And so we want to provide that overview for you, what specifically flexibilities did we see used in these 120 schools reporting? You can see the most widely used flexibilities in this left-hand category, we see budget, employment requirement, and calendar flexibilities. So those are the flexibilities that are most used across, at that time, across those 107 schools. This year, we've had the opportunity to break down this information for you even further. And so we are able to now tell you, whereas we were able to just give broad information before, we have some specifics for you, that breaking down budget flexibility for you and these 107 schools, we have specific ways that the flexibility provided for them in terms of strategies that they were using. Now, it is important to note that these schools can use multiple strategies. And so it could be that they're, it's not that they've used one signal, single strategy, but they might have chosen to use many strategies that fall under budget flexibility. So specifically, we see that 79% report additional staff and flexible staffing, 67% are providing professional development for their teachers, 63 instructional resources, 20% are providing stipends or incentives, and then 16% new instructional programs. When we look at employment requirement flexibility, and this again is that ability to hire, so I'll break it down more specifically here and keep on track with my notes. So of the 58 of the 120 schools reporting employment flexibility, 45% are hiring or placing certified staff outside of their certification, 62% are hiring non-certified staff. And again, they may be doing both of those, but those are our percentages of how they're being used across all those schools. When we look at calendar flexibility, 31 of the 120 schools are using calendar flexibility, but using it in multiple different ways. So 42% report an early start or end of the school year, 39% add more teacher workdays, 26% add more time to the school day, 16% align their school calendar to the local community college, and 13% have some kind of a modified year-round calendar. I will note that that doesn't mean it's our capital M-modified, it might have just been their own modification, because we know we have year-round and modified specific. And then when we look at a standard course of study and how, what the flexibilities are providing for, we see that these 15 schools that are reporting a change in the standard course of study, it's really more about the curriculum. And so 73% are using curriculum that's different from their district, and then 13% are actually providing an additional course above what we would outline as the standard course of study. Assessment flexibility, 18 schools of the 120 report using assessment flexibility, 44% are reporting eliminating the KEA, or what's now known as the NCE-LI, 17 adjust their district assessments, and 11% report just a limited time, limiting the time on assessments. So that information is broken down for you, but because we've now been tracking this over the course of years, we can now provide a comparison in this table. So between 17, 18, all the way through 19, 20, you can see how the use of flexibility has changed over the years, but it's also important to note that the schools have also increased. So just recognizing that in 2017, that was just cohort one, in 18, 19, it was cohort one and two, and then 19, 20, one, two, and three cohorts. So the number of schools reporting, of course, is increasing. We did do some gathering of information because I believed that you'd be interested in this, that budget, that, excuse me, flexibility certainly did help these schools adjust on a dime for, within their remote learning and the critical needs that they had to address. So with flexibility, they were able to quickly address some of these things. We drew out some information for you that they were using budget flexibility to fund things like digital instructional tools, equipment, professional learning, even consumables and instructional resources that were distributed to students who were away from the school but received equipment and received resources that they needed. We also saw that they hired additional staff, so tutors, which I find interesting in light of our keynote, right? Professional learning provided, and so adjusting their calendar and adding budget flexibility to provide that professional learning to support remote learning. So very interesting, I hope you appreciate that. It was very interesting for us to see where they were using to support the situation that we're all in. I do want to share with you now some, the ways that we have specifically been able to support these schools, and just your own directive to us to make sure that these schools understand, and I should say, schools and districts, excuse me, the schools and the districts truly understand how they can use these flexibilities. So that has been around our support. So we were able to develop this support because we were able to hire. So in 2020, I had, before 2020, we were a team of one, then we added one person, team of two, and now last January, February, we added three people. And so we have a four, what we call comprehensive support specialists, who are an amazing team of people who have incredibly added value to this work and developing a system of support. So from your own directive, one of the first things I'd like to highlight on this is that we have outlined now a school orientation and a district orientation when new schools come along, as well as when principals and district leaders turn over. So we make sure there's a continued support, that there's an understanding. I have a real passion about making sure that our state support, our district support, our school support is all aligned. And so that's, you can see that at the bottom, and Maureen, that's part of my goal there. Another piece I'd like to highlight for you is our professional learning network. So this team of comprehensive support specialists has developed a strong professional learning network. We meet monthly, virtually. We highlight these schools and what they're doing. We give them opportunities to be panelists and serve as presenters and share with others, and we are hearing from the field that they really appreciate this and want to hear and learn from one another. Another highlight that in our support, and I would say it's not technically our support because we have Dave Maschado's team and the OCS team to thank for the opportunity to bring four of our restart leaders as guest fellows in the NC Access Program. They will have year-long professional learning this year. Another way we've been able to support is going on and identifying that we provided feedback on the annual report. These 120 schools each received individual written feedback specifically about everything they wrote in their report, as well as if you're a low-performing restart, you receive feedback on their school improvement plan. And so in this work that we've done, we recognized really the need for strong school improvement teams, right? Because not only that, not only from our gleaning from what we read on their reports and their plans, but knowing that if you're going to add something in an innovative practice, how will you know if it's working if you don't monitor it, right? And we want, we're asking these schools, add your innovative practice, watch it, find measures, track it, and look for your progress, and they are doing it. But we understood from that process that they need a support in their school improvement planning, their school improvement team. And so what you can see in that list of professional development, we've developed those professional learning sessions specifically out of the restart work, but it is now influencing the entire state. And so our NC Stars School Improvement Training that just happened statewide have used some of these sessions all across the state. So it's been a benefit not only to our restart schools, but all across the state. With that, I want to just move on and say we have one recommendation for you, and just in light of our impact on COVID-19 and the lack of performance data, we need to adjust our statement again at the top of the policy. And so it would simply read, for approved restart schools implementing as of 1920 and the 2021 school year impacted by COVID-19 and the lack of data, the monitoring cycle would be extended to a seven-year cycle based on the availability of data. And with that, I want to, just in closing, before I ask if you all have any questions, two things. I want to share with you that we will have, you will have the opportunity to hear from one of our restart districts and schools in January. So we'll have them come and share with you. And I think that'll be a wonderful opportunity to hear again from the field. And then also, I just want to take a moment and thank Dr. Emery. I know that she's not here today, but when I stepped into this role, she was stepping into the role, into her role first here. And she came from a district in which she was very, very involved with the beginning of a restart school, and that was Cook Literacy. And so her wisdom and guidance certainly helped me as we developed what these schools needed. So I just want to thank her for that. So with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. I'll turn my colleagues, as you can see, they're doing amazing work behind the scenes and really digging deep to peel back the layers and the strength of cohorts and collaboration. And I'll make the jump to what the charter school community does with a, a needs assessment and a sort of an investigation. That's what you've provided with an outside lens to look deeply. Sometimes when you're in the midst of something, you can't see things yourself because you're living it, breathing it every day, but having that outside, critical friend approach can provide some laser, laser-style interventions that are effective. Anyone have a question or a comment?
I have a question.
Dr. Oxenden.
When you go, thank you for your hard work. It shows and you're always enthusiastic when you come to the mic. I can tell you love your work. So tell me a little bit about this point. Do you look at the district strategic plan?